First of all, I want to thank all the registrants and participants in the conference for submitting your comments about which accounting standards are worthy of review for the private company possible modifications. Those comments have been very helpful in putting together this particular session. The session is going to be moderated actually by Billy Atkinson, once we find where Billy escaped to. But in the meantime, the code for this particular session is STATE. I think what I'd first like to do, in the interest of just continuing to move on here, is for each of the panelists to introduce themselves. Most of them are very, very familiar to us, but I'd like them to say hello.
Thanks, Ron. My name's Russ Gold, and I'm the chairman of the FASB. I've been with the organization for a number of years. Before that, I was a partner at Deloitte. My various clients while I was at Deloitte, I did have some large public companies, but I spent a number of years out in Silicon Valley serving private companies and companies that were desiring public capital, going public.
Good morning. My name's Tom Grosskopf, a member of the Private Company Council. My day job is the technical director at Barnes-Denig, a regional CPA firm, and based in Cincinnati, Ohio. I'm also a technical director for the AICPA, CPEA.
Hey, I'm George Beckwith. I am the chief financial officer of National Gypsum Company, and we are a drywall manufacturer based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. We're a privately held company, and started my career in public accounting and was a tax person for a while, and then I figured out that the tax stuff didn't make any sense, so I'd switch to the accounting world. I've been sorely disappointed.
I'm Mark Siegel. Good morning. In my second term as a board member of the FASB. Prior to that, I had spent a number of years on the investor side of the house, doing sell-side research, looking through financial statements, trying to find early warning signs of problems by digging through the footnotes and warning investors about any early warning signs. Prior to that, I'd spent time doing auditing and consulting.
Good morning. My name's Jeff Bryan. I'm with Dixon Hughes Goodman, a southeastern-based accounting firm. I am in the professional standards group for the firm, and prior to that, I was a practice partner in Atlanta, serving primarily private companies, but also some public companies as well.
And I'm Daryl Buck, and you already know me, so I'll keep it short, but I didn't want to mention, like Mark, I'm now in my second term as a member of the FASB, so I'm very happy about that. Prior to that, as many of you know, I was the CFO of a regional grocery store chain based in Oklahoma.
Thank you. I'll have my first question. Which of these do I use, Daryl?
This one.
This one?
Yeah. Use that green button.
Thank you. Thanks for introducing yourselves. My name is Billy Atkinson, and you can guess where I was. I'm not going to stand up here for two hours full of coffee. It's good to be here. Thank you very much to the hosts of the organization, the committee at AICPA that hosted this thing many years. It's a great event. I want to particularly thank Ron Roush for coordinating with us on this. He's done a super job, and Christine as well. And I thank our panel members for being here, the FASB board members as well as the PCC members. This format is really beginning to help us. As you know, we started back in 2013 with the first one in Columbus, Ohio, at the Ohio State University. We followed up at the University of Washington. We've done one at SMU. We had this one here this last year. We have another town hall scheduled at the AICPA Controllers Conference that's in Orlando in October, in November. And we're working on now trying to get one organized, a town hall organized, in New York at one of the universities there. We're working with the committee, with the New York Society, New York State Society CPAs, to get that next one teed up, probably in the spring. And I believe that the format has worked. This is really a roundtable on steroids. The objective is to have an open mic. The danger is to have an open mic, but we're willing to take that risk because we think that the benefit of it is too important, too important to each of you. You are the stakeholders. You are the accounting standard setters in many respects because of your feedback and your input and your passion, your experience. And the people here on this panel need your feedback today. We've organized this agenda to try to get some good feedback. We have some 19 questions that we're going to try to get feedback from you on in a very short span of time. We want to cover some of the material just to an introductory process only so that we can then gather your feedback to either confirm the directions that we've set on some things or to confirm the direction we should follow on some other issues that we'll have in the agenda. And then we'll have an open mic to really get some additional feedback. Feedback that we got from this group last year at this time resulted in some simplification initiatives and standards that were, that have been affected and/or in process of being affected. So with that, I also want to introduce Mike Chang and Jeff Mechanic. Where are you? There's Jeff right here. Mike's over here. They're right below the lights, but I see them. They're on the FASB staff. They have been working directly with the PCC in many respects, subject matter, as well as Mike. Mike is really the guy that leads us around and gives me all the agendas that I overrule. But they've done a great job. They're going to help facilitate us today by teeing up some of these topics because myself included can get a little too verbose in the tee-up, and so they'll help us do that, and then we'll go through some of the questions. Again, in the agenda, we want to go through the finalized PCCA issues that have been endorsed. Just quickly, we want to go through this issue we call preferability. We'll talk some about some of the simplification projects at the FASB that we've been dealing with, and we have some input needs on, and then emerging issues as well. So with that, I'd like, is it Mike, you first, or is it Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff, go right ahead.
Is my mic on?
No.
No, it's not. Okay. It's turned on.
Now it is.
I think it's sort of on. Okay, great. So as Billy said, we're going to quickly go through some of the stuff which I'll say is sort of old news, but we do want to get some updated data, some updated feedback from you. The first is to remind you that in addition to the creation of the PCC, the other thing that really came out of our look at standard setting for private companies a few years ago that began with the Blue Ribbon Panel was the creation of a key tool for our PCC and our board to use in standard setting, not only in these look-back projects that the PCC has focused on in its initial stages, but also, at least as importantly, for the board and for the PCC in advising the board on all of the ongoing projects of the FASB. And so what we're trying to do with the private company decision-making framework is to focus on trying to take costs out of the system, but very importantly, not at the expense of the usefulness of the information to those who actually use financial statements of not-for-profit organizations. So we're trying, not-for-profit, sorry, my other hat, of private companies. So we're trying to strike a balance here and, you know, have good, cost-effective information for private companies, for those again who use the financials of private companies. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay. We're now going to get into the ASUs. So the first few ASUs were ones that were out a year ago, more than a year ago, and where we had some polling questions on it. We're just trying to get some updated feedback now that folks have a little bit more of a chance to digest and we hope implement some of these ASUs. The first of those is the ASU on goodwill. And what that does is it provides an alternative for private companies to, instead of carrying goodwill and just testing it for impairment at least annually at a reporting unit level and using the two-step impairment method with an optional qualitative assessment, instead to amortize goodwill of a period not to exceed 10 years, to test for impairment only upon the occurrence of a triggering event rather than minimally annually, to test either at the reporting unit level or if the private company decides to do so at the entity level, and then very importantly, to go to a one-step test for impairment where you'd be able to avoid the particularly costly second step of an implied, you know, evaluation of the entire reporting unit or company, and then back into the value for goodwill. Again, that we particularly have heard is a very costly step. So on to the next slide, and Billy, I'm not sure if we're tossing these back to you or not, but...
Yeah, let's go ahead. Do you know how to use your polling devices? So they all know how to do it perfectly, right, Ron? Okay. Here'll be the first question, which is, have you applied or adopted the alternative? And when we say "you," we're talking about your client or your purview. Have you seen the adoption in your business, whatever the respect is, under the new ASU 2014-2? And the answers would be yes, or if we expect to do so, no, eligible, it's a private company with goodwill but do not expect to do so, C, not eligible, and D, uncertain. And again, we're trying to get some clarity of your expectations as well as what you've seen done. So if you could answer those, we'd appreciate it.
I just wanted to clarify, sorry, it's a little louder. As you're answering this question, we understand that most of you are practitioners, so I think it's just looking at your client base and seeing a significant portion of your clients are expected to adopt this ASU.
Okay. Do what?
Advance to the next slide.
Oh, I need to do that, right? Thanks, Christine. I didn't do that. I guess that means it's figuring? Hell, we all know the answer is yes, so. Absolutely. Only a fool would not do this. So do I go to the next slide or do I wait? No, that didn't work. Is that the answer? Oh, okay. I can't read it. Or here it is down here. Okay. So we're done with that one. I think dominantly, the answer I believe I see down there is yes. It's the dominant answer. Is that what you read? Okay, good. Thanks. Okay. It's intangible.
Back to me. I've been told to stay closer to the mic. I'm being like a rock star here, I guess. So this is the, well, it calls the companion ASU for the one on goodwill. This one took us a little bit longer to do, but we did come up with a final alternative after the last year's town hall meeting here. And what the final alternative does is it allows, you know, for a private company not to separately break out from goodwill, those intangibles that we've heard from users of financial statements where they particularly believe that they might want to know about the existence of these, but they don't particularly find the fair valuation apart from goodwill to be particularly useful information. And those are the non-competition agreements as well as customer relationship, customer-related intangibles unless they are capable of being sold or licensed independently of the overall business, and those include, for example, mortgage servicing rights or core deposits. So with that, Billy, let's go on to the polling question about this one.
Okay. And here's the question. Have you applied, and again, same thing, same comment Mike made, you or your clients applied or adopted the alternative under ASU 2014-18, intangibles? I guess yes, expect to do so, no, eligible, but C, not applicable, and D, uncertain. Now, I'll have the third one down perfect. While you're completing the polling there, I'll say that Technical Issues Committee is very helpful with us, working with us on this issue. Their input was very impactful, and we appreciate it. We feel like with this intangible standard, we've got a good start. We've got a lot of items there that are common items that can be subsumed into goodwill, and yet there's room for more. So we'll see how that goes in the future with the PCC and the FASB. Okay, that's pretty much... Yes. So generally looks fairly supportive. Everyone got that down? I think we'll have a copy of these when it's over so we can pour over it, and Daryl can tell us what they really meant. Okay. Interest rate swaps.
Okay, so interest rate swaps was...
Thank you again.
Thanks. Interest rate swaps was another ASU that was out, you know, before last year's conference. And this, what we're talking about here are plain vanilla interest rate swaps where a private company, especially at the height of the financial crisis, wanted to get a fixed-rate loan, but the bank wouldn't give them a fixed-rate loan, gave them instead a variable-rate loan, often coupled with an interest rate swap to achieve more or less the same results. And what this ASU does is it gives private companies an alternative to use a simplified hedge accounting approach, somewhat similar to the current shortcut method that is available, that allows it to be easier to get into hedge accounting and to stay in hedge accounting. There's some relief in terms of the timing of the documentation requirements, and very importantly, there's the ability to use settlement value in lieu of fair value to record the changes, which are again outside of net income, in a hedge accounting-type approach. And so with that, Billy, let me just turn it back to you for the question.
Okay. The question here is, have you applied or adopted this alternative? Yes, no, not eligible, or uncertain? Again. Told you I'd get it right by the third one. We all done? It still looks pretty good. I like the right side of that wheel. Okay.
Turn it over to Mike for the next one.
All right. Thanks. So I guess I get to talk about everyone's favorite topic, which is applying variable interest entity guidance. And this ASU 2014-07 relates to common control leasing arrangements, right? So if you have a private company and you're leasing a building or an asset from a leasing company who's also under common control, sometimes you're pulled into VIE guidance. And what this alternative does is allows a private company to assess whether they meet certain criteria, and if you meet all four criteria, then you don't have to apply VIE guidance. What you end up doing is you jump into a decision where you don't consolidate due to VIE guidance, and you provide some more robust disclosures, which arguably a lot of people think is already covered by Topic 850. And it's really just related to the exposure that you may have by not consolidating that entity or what liabilities could result from the leasing company. So with that, I think we can jump right into the next polling question.
Have you applied or adopted this alternative, ASU 2014-7? And again, the answers are yes, no, not eligible, or uncertain. So the FASB board members are reading these answers, are looking at that big part of that yellow circle, and they're saying, these guys are gaming the system on us.
Absolutely not. We all voted for this. We're happy to see these results.
Not enough of you voted for this.
This was unanimous. This one was unanimous.
It was unanimous. It was the only one that was unanimous.
I know.
Somebody knocked Larry out and he couldn't be there.
You only need four.
You only need four, that's right. Okay, thank you. A discussion now on preferability. Before we move forward, is Mac Lohan somewhere around here? Stand up, Mac. Stand up, Mac. Mac Lohan is FAF trustee, and he chairs the PCRC, which is a private company reporting committee of the FAF that works directly with the PCC and the FASB with regards to these issues. Mac has been at every meeting, has been at every town hall, and every time we've gathered has been there, and that's not bad for a tax guy. Mac is a retired chairman emeritus at Weber LLP, and I really have appreciated working with Mac. His term ends at the FAF at the end of this year, and I would like to ask you to join me in giving him a round of applause for his effort. Thanks again for being here, Mac. And I appreciated dinner last night. Did I say it all right? I got that right? Okay, good. Who's going to key up preferability? Mike?
Yep.
Preferability is an important topic that we're looking at for all the right reasons, and Mike will tee it up for us.
All right. If you can jump to the next slide. All right. So we just talked about the four ASUs that were, or the PCC alternatives that have been endorsed by the board. So I guess we should probably talk about its effective date. So here you'll see three ASUs, the goodwill, the swaps, and the VIE one, and that's going to be effective for annual periods beginning December 15, 2014. So for example, if you have a calendar year-end, you're a private company, then it's going to be effective for calendar year-end 2015. So this year for three of the ASUs. And then if you look at the intangibles ASU, which was issued in late of 2014, that pretty much has the same effective date except it's one year later. So let me jump to the next slide. And the reason I guess we're talking about the effective date is really, it touches on Topic 250, right? So as you see on this slide up here, it says that a change in accounting principle, including PCC alternatives, after the effective date requires a preferability assessment. So what that really means is that if you have goodwill, let's go through an example. Let's say you have goodwill this year, you're a private company, and it's 2015, and you decide not to elect a PCC alternative by the time you issue the financial statements. Two, three, maybe five years down the road, you decide that you do want to elect a PCC alternative. Well, what GAAP says you're required to do is assess preferability. You have to state why the PCC alternative is preferable to current GAAP, which was probably the current impairment model under Statement 142 that you would be applying. So that's the first issue that would be related to PCC alternatives and preferability. If you go to the next slide, another related issue is anytime you have a voluntary change in accounting principle, you have to apply that new accounting principle under full retrospective application if there's no guidance within GAAP telling you how to transition into that guidance. So this relates to any accounting principle. So for example, if you had LIFO inventory and you want to switch to FIFO inventory, you have to adopt that at the date that you adopt that accounting principle on a full retrospective basis. So what this means is that if you're adopting, let's say, goodwill by the effective date, you could look at the transition guidance, and there's actually transition relief, I would call it. So you would have to apply this on a prospective basis if you adopt a goodwill standard within this year. But if you do it, let's say, three, five years down the road, if there's no change or revision to GAAP today, you would actually have to apply that alternative on a full retrospective basis, meaning look at every acquisition of goodwill that you had, assume that you've been adopting it since the beginning of time, and figure out what the amortization would be up to the date that you apply it. So that's going to roll into our next set of questions, our three polling questions.
We've got about three. Go ahead. You want to read the questions there?
Sure. So the polling question you have up here is, do you think it will be difficult to establish that a private company alternative is preferable under GAAP? Yes, no, or uncertain? You know, this is just a beginning question to see how people are assessing preferability and assess whether there's just diversity in practice. Looks like the numbers are coming in.
Go ahead, Russ.
So I think that result is right. When you think about what the board and the PCC did is we created a decision-making framework focused on relevance first and then cost-saving second. And these alternatives were specifically designed because both the PCC and the board thought it was more useful to your stakeholders, to your users. And so I would expect in that case, it shouldn't be all that difficult to establish preferability when the standard was specifically designed to make it better for private companies. So the majority of no is what I would have expected. It's how, when I was in practice, and there are differences, and there were differences 10, 12 years ago, when I had clients that wanted to become public and then could not and wanted to go back to private companies, I didn't blink an eye on assessing that they were preferable because there were standards specifically established. So this is what I would have hoped and what I would have expected.
So next polling question is, if there was no requirement to assess preferability, so meaning for private companies, do you believe that a private company would change accounting principles to yield a desired financial reporting result? So if you're a private company and there was no preferability, do you think that that private company would game the system?
Again, yes, no, and uncertain.
It'll be interesting to compare the answers at the Controllers Conference on this one.
Yeah. They'll probably say no.
Any comment, reaction there?
Yeah, this one surprised me. It kind of, I don't know, I might, if I felt a client was like that, I might fire them. I mean, it's kind of weird. It's almost implying that your clients would purposely do something that was not in the best interest of your clients, which I find not surprising. I expected this to be a strong no. Do you guys?
I guess I have a question as to whether or not this is in the context of adopting one of the PCC alternatives, or is it more broader than that? Because I think that with respect to the PCC alternatives, I wouldn't expect that companies would be looking to game the systems because I don't know that there's really any big advantage to the impairing or amortizing, or since users are telling us that oftentimes they ignore the amount of goodwill in financial statements to begin with.
But if people are looking at the question as a LIFO, FIFO, or any other accounting change question, maybe they would have had a different answer. And I think what this says to me is that the practitioners in the room think that preferability is something that helps them in keeping some consistency with their clients, I guess.
Yeah, and I think some private companies wouldn't look at making a change between straight-line depreciation and double-declining balances necessarily being, doing something that lacked integrity and was just trying to get a desired financial reporting result. So I do understand from my perspective why folks voted yes on this question.
Okay. You want me to get a show of hands to see if they would give us a different answer?
No.
No? Okay, good. Won't put you on the spot. Next question.
All right. So this question's really just to gather some feedback to bring back to the next PCC meeting, because this is a topic that the PCC and the board are really considering. And it's asking, what's the best path forward in addressing preferability? So A, providing an unconditional option for a private company to make an initial election of a PCC alternative. What A means is that you have basically an indefinite effective date. So the first time you elect a PCC alternative, whenever that may be, it could be five years from now, 10 years from now, you do not have to assess preferability of a PCC alternative. B is the same exact option, except it would be for any private company alternative. So as you know, we've talked about the four PCC alternatives so far, but there are other alternatives. For example, in share-based compensation, if you're using or measuring a liability-based award, there is an option to do intrinsic or fair value. So that would be just for any private company alternative. C is an option where we would go back to Topic 250, kind of open up the books and make some amendments to provide additional authoritative guidance to help practitioners and prepare us to assess preferability. I think it would be along the lines where we'd say a change in circumstances could warrant a change in accounting principle or a change in private company alternative. And then D is just eliminating preferability altogether. So which option do you think best addresses this situation?
Before we start voting, I wanted to see if any of the panelists had comments about those alternatives. This is again, as you mentioned, very critical to us for our upcoming meeting.
I just want to make one clarification. Preferability doesn't apply for the first time you encounter something. So if you don't have goodwill on your balance sheet right now, five, 10 years down the road, you get goodwill, you do have the ability, you don't have to assess preferability because it's the first time you've encountered a particular item that's in question. Same thing would hold for a qualifying VIE as well. So I just want to be clear that that does not apply, preferability does not apply on the first time that something is encountered.
Anyone else? Russ? Mark? Jeff? Jordan? Daryl? Okay, let's vote. Okay, let's vote. We don't have anyone here from Kansas City that's gaming the system, do you? All-star games tonight. Tom's going to be there with his son.
He's going to try.
He's going to try to be there with his son. Okay? How you like them apples?
Well, I used to audit. I'm confused. The red one seems to say something that's not on the...
The questions were, it was changed from the slides that you see here.
It's now conformed to the present, it now conforms to the format of the report for next week.
But you like my auditing?
Yeah.
So what's the question then? Provided, I can't see. I need to go to the eye doctor.
Yeah, we just can't get just 36-inch screens anymore.
What's the blue one?
Unconditional option.
Unconditional for any.
Yeah, so we're split, huh?
Yeah, but not too many want to eliminate preferability entirely.
Okay, well, thanks a lot. So now we're going to all argue next week on what you really meant. Any questions, comments on this before we leave this topic? Any clarification that any of you think we should try to poll verbally or show hands? Okay, I asked. Thank you on that topic. Simplification project, next one? Was there a follow-up?
Oh, no, there's no follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so you know, Darryl talked quite a bit on simplification. I don't think I'm going to be able to say it as well as he did. But you know, I think some of the key takeaways is that the PCC, I would say, is a catalyst for the simplification project. And what I mean by that sense is that we should probably simplify GAAP for all companies, whether you're private, public, or not-for-profit. And the objective here again is to reduce costs and complexity, but most importantly, we should at least maintain or improve the usefulness of financial reporting information. You go into the next slide.
And I think before we go to the next slide, I also would add that we do not intend for simplification to be a backdoor to IFRS.
Neither do we.
I had to say that.
So you, you know, peeked ahead and looked at the slides. There's a lot of simplification projects, but we selected two projects, at least the panelists here. And the reason we selected those projects is because this is, I would argue, two projects that the PCC has had significant involvement in. First one we'll talk about is share-based payments, so employee, you know, share-based compensation. And really quickly, current GAAP today is under Statement 123R. The first thing you have to do, in terms of a private company when they get an award, is assess whether that award is an equity-based award or a liability-based award. And that could be fairly difficult because the line is potentially drawn between, you know, FASB 150. There's perhaps confusion in what we have in the concept statements, but it's usually a fairly difficult assessment. Once you figure out whether your award is liability or equity-based, you have, you know, different recognition and measurement, journal entries, I would say. You have an equity classified award, what you do is you figure out the grant date fair value, so that's a date that you grant the award. And then you expense that or recognize that expense over the requisite service period. If you have a liability-based award, what you have to do is re-measure that award at fair value every single reporting period until settlement. Now, because you're a private company, you do have the option to elect the intrinsic value if you chose to do so when you did it within the time span that the Statement 123R was open for its effective date. So you go to the next slide. Here is a slew or just a bunch of bullets in terms of simplification, simplifications that the board has proposed. So actually, you know, as Darryl alluded to earlier, there is actually an exposure draft on this for share-based compensation. And the comment period deadline is due in August. I'm not going to go through, you know, all these, and actually, there's a deeper dive later. So if you're interested and if you want to talk about any particular simplification, we can definitely dive into it a little deeper, but I'll hit on a couple of them. So one you'll see is a minimum statutory withholding requirement. Today, if you have an award and you have to withhold compensation for, you know, for tax purposes, that award can still qualify as an equity-based award even though there's going to be an outlay of cash from the entities. As long as it's at the minimum statutory withholding rate. But that's really hard to gauge, right? Because you could have a graduated bracket within a particular state. You have potentially 50 different states if you're just a domestic, you know, employer. So what the board decided to do is propose a simplification where if you withhold below the maximum with a statutory rate, you would still qualify for equity treatment. Accounting for forfeitures is another one that I like to highlight. And today, as you're recognizing and measuring expense for share-based compensation, what you're supposed to do is estimate what you think, the awards that will be forfeited. What they're proposing for tomorrow is that you could just book or chew up those forfeitures as they occur. So you could, you don't have to estimate what you think the forfeiture rate will be. I'm going to jump down to basically intrinsic value. And you know, I get mentioned that if you had a liability-based award, what you can do is use something called intrinsic value. And really, it's what that award would settle at, at the date that you're looking, you know, at any particular date. So it's at year-end and you're looking at the award, you're just literally doing a mathematical calculation on what you think the payout would be as opposed to looking at fair value on a forward-looking basis. But you do have to re-measure it every single reporting period. What the simplification here is, is that if you did not elect intrinsic value up to the effective date for Statement 123R, the basis made it fairly difficult to probably transition back into this because it stated that fair value is probably the preferred method in measuring these awards. So what the board decided to do is provide basically another in or another pass at applying intrinsic value if you elected to do so for a private company. One thing I'd like to mention is I think the PCC supports all, you know, the overall simplification initiative for share-based compensation. But what they're doing right now is really considering any additional simplifications or alternatives for private companies. So they're really trying to exhaust whether additional relief could be provided for private companies as long as it doesn't reduce, you know, the usefulness of the information provided to users. And with that, I don't know if there's any comments.
About four of our PCC members, when we started discussing this topic, we decided that because of the sensitivity of this topic, it's got a history. Bob Hirsch had a lot of history with it in front of Congress, that this, this is an issue that probably should be a FASB project because it really would apply to public and private, so I think. And they welcomed four of our members to setting in on that task force that looked at it. And our members have basically come back to us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, as through the last meeting, and said, "We do not see a silver bullet for private companies, a differentiation here that should be worked into this proposal." And so we're at a point of kind of a final discussion of it at next week's meeting with the FASB. And this is very timely that we get this feedback from you as to whether or not you see anything. And if you do, let us know what it is pretty quickly, please. Anything else about teeing up the questions, Mike? Is that about it?
Billy?
Yes, sir.
You know, initially you said that this was going to not be part of a separate initiative of the PCC, but rather was to be part of the broader project. And as Billy mentioned, we have been looking at this for over a year, trying to come up with this silver bullet. And we think that there are a lot of differences between private companies and public companies. Most importantly, the fact that you have to go through a separate valuation each time an award is issued under, for a private company and you don't have a ready market. So again, any suggestions to help us along this process would be greatly appreciated.
Any other comments? Don't these guys look good up here? Okay, let's go through the questions then, Mike.
First polling question related to this is, you know, overall, do you think the proposed simplifications will reduce costs and complexity for accounting for share-based payments? So yes, no, uncertain? So the proposal that, or the exposure draft that's out right now?
Looks kind of like that fish that's looking at the shrimp on my hook. You can't decide whether to take it or not.
Probably to ask how many folks are familiar with the proposal.
I'm guessing that's what the uncertain is.
Okay?
So the next polling question is, "Thus far, the PCC has been unable to identify additional viable alternatives for private companies in accounting for share-based payments. Do you believe there are circumstances unique to private companies that warrant additional alternatives?" So above and beyond what has been proposed in the exposure draft?
Got it? Okay. It's about like we, about like we have concluded, Jeff, I think, is that I know I'm a hearth or something, I just can't pinpoint it. Thanks. If anyone has some specifics, please bring them to us at the mic later this session or after this session to Jeff Bryan or Tom or any of the other people that are up here. We'd appreciate the timeliness of it. Balance sheet classification of debt. Mike?
So I didn't realize that this would be a recurring theme at the Nats conference. Actually, I don't know if Keith Peturkis, oh, I see him right there. He spent a pretty good chunk of time, I think, discussing the classification of debt. And then Darryl talked about it a little earlier. So I think I'm just going to hit on a couple examples or, you know, go through what is in current GAAP and then what the board is proposing really quickly. So, you know, if you have debt due on demand today, you don't assess probability. That debt is pretty much current, right? If you have a subjective acceleration clause, that plays a little different, you know, it's a little different because it's a different rule for that, right? So you have to now assess whether you think it's probable that subjective acceleration clause would be called or whether it's remote or not. And that would affect how you would classify the debt being current or non-current. That also changes if you have a, you know, revolving credit and you have a lockbox or spring lockbox. But then if you look at debt covenants, if you violate a debt covenant, what you do is you are permitted to use, you know, up to the time period before your financial statements are made available for issuance. And if you receive a waiver, you can retrospectively adopt that or apply it as of the balance sheet date and state that your debt is non-current. So I think, you know, as Darryl put it, it's a cobbled, bunch of rules kind of put together to assess whether debt is classified as current and non-current. What the board is trying to propose is something I think is a little more intuitive. And what I mean by that is that if you were to ask someone coming out of college that just took an intro to accounting class, they'd probably believe that debt would be classified based on your right to defer settlement, right? So if you can defer, or contractually, you have the right to defer settlement for a period of greater than 12 years, 12 months, as of the balance sheet date, then you would have non-current classification. If you couldn't, it would be current. I think that's simple, but obviously, I think that has some drastic implications in a lot of debt covenants and, you know, the financial position of a lot of private companies. So while this rule is a little easy or easier to apply, I think there is definitely some concerns from private company stakeholders on how the simplification will actually play out. So I don't know if there's any more commentary from the panelists?
Yes. Commentary?
I guess my first observation is that, you know, amongst the alternatives that we've put forth so far, there's been one alternative for which there's been unanimity. In this case, there is unanimity between the board and the PCC, amongst the board and the PCC. The PCC feels 10 to 0 one way and the board feels 7 to 0 the other way.
And we know that the board's smart. We're just, we don't get it yet. We're struggling with it. So we're trying to figure this one out. The concern that I'll share with you, which is just networking capital. Is there a value placed on presentation of working capital in a balance sheet? And if so, is it distorted by a note that was rolled 30 days after the balance sheet date for 12, 18, 24 months, once they had a chance to take a look at the draft financial statements? I think it's a very common occurrence. It is where I come from. And I really believe that we need to preserve the opportunity to revisit working capital presentation in that example, notwithstanding the others that we have in our questions here. Any other comments there if you have, George, or anyone?
I have a comment. A little bit of insight is to some of my issues with it. And I don't know if anybody feels the same, but I'm comfortable with being alone. A couple of my issues is I am, I really like the idea of 12 months current, not 12 months, non-current. I sort of like that theoretical concept. I don't know why you just apply it to bank debt. I wish this were a little more encompassing and not so incremental and it were to define current liabilities in a more holistic approach. Because while this may help one thing, it's not going to, it's really not going to solve. We're going to be back at this again because there are lots of assets and liabilities that are either current or non-current that may not follow that same rule. So that's one issue I have with it. That's not really a reason I would be against it much. But another issue I have with this particular issue is there are other things, whether we like it or not. For instance, contractors and the way they are licensed at various states, that if they have a certain amount of working capital, then they have to get a bond if they want to work on a certain size job. So this is going to affect people's businesses. So it's a little more than just an accounting standard. This is actually going to affect how people do work and jobs and things like that. It's going to affect the cost of doing business. So I really want this to work, but I believe that's a hurdle that somehow has to be addressed, whether it's with a transition or some type of education. And I got to tell you, when you talk with state regulatory bodies, and I've called some of them, they are not easy to move and they don't care what happens. They say, "It says use GAAP. If GAAP changes, I don't care if the rules change midstream. I'm not changing me." That's, it's, it's a reality that we have to deal with. And that's one of the issues I have with it.
Jeff?
Earlier this morning, in his remarks, Darryl referred to it as somewhat of a debate over the old auditing standards, the type 1 or type 2 subsequent events. And I can't put words in his mouth, but I think that he's saying that he doesn't believe that it's an event that should be recognizable, which is a subsequent waiver. I guess, so he's looking at the waiver as being a separate event that occurred after the balance sheet date. I guess in my simplistic view, I see it more as that there was a loan agreement in place, there were covenants in place. The bank may or may not have known of the existence of the fact that they were going to be in breach of the covenants. They determined that, that they were in violation. And then as a separate event, they waived the condition that already existed at the balance sheet date. So I don't look at it as a new transaction. I look at it more as a resolution of an uncertainty that existed as of the balance sheet date. And so I am supportive of looking at it more as a type 1 subsequent event to reflect that it is non-current if in fact there is not going to be an outlay of cash in the next 12 months.
Yeah, and you also would avoid, in many cases, an extension of additional procedures for going concern consideration. You know, the extended procedures that you would trigger if you had a big working capital deficit and that sort of thing. So with me, it's just a matter of where I, where I read working capital, on the balance sheet or in the footnotes? And there's not footnotes in all the other, in a lot of the governmental documents that you file with as a contractor and the like. Footnotes don't matter. So that becomes a real sticking point with me in that regard. Russ?
So I think that, I think what Billy described, and I disagree respectfully with Jeff. I think this is an exception to type 2 subsequent events. I think the event is clearly occurs when the waiver is. And I think when you go to the banks, they don't say, "Well, it's just a non-substantive waiver." They actually underwrite and determine if they want to do the waiver and they didn't have to do that. But that said, I think the way Billy described is this is really about, do you want to observe it on the face or do you want to observe it in the notes? But let me give you a little background about, because I don't think people understand how some of these things just appear on our agenda. This isn't just the seven of us sitting in a room going, "How can we make things hard?" What, the reason this came to the board's agenda is we had decided to do the simplification initiative. So we reached out to a number of stakeholders and said, "Send us a list of what you think is too complex." Send us a list as to what our Send us a list as to what are foot faults." And what I mean by foot faults is they are inadvertent mistakes. And I recognize, and I'll preface this, that this is not going to land well in this room, but when you recall the PC you'll be first inspecting, the large accounting firms, every single one of them had this as an error, because of the subjective acceleration clauses. The, and that's why the questions are in two things. The first question you'll see is about subjective acceleration clauses, and the next question is about debt covenant violations. So the language about subjective acceleration clauses, you have to assess the remoteness, there's the other remoteness, and there's very little understanding, at least in the public company arena, the importance of doing that. And so it seemed to us that, well, perhaps we could make this easier, and not put you all in a situation where you could have foot faults, because, and you don't have to answer this, are you really analyzing today if there is subjective acceleration clauses? And if so, is it other than remote? And how would you evaluate other than remote? And so it was designed to make it easier for you. Now, the other thing is, is we thought, well, you get different answers in Billy's question about, do you roll the loan? You get one answer if you roll the loan with the same financial institution, but you get a different answer if you roll it with a different financial institution. In essence, you're going to pay a premium if you stay with the financial institution, because they know you'll get current classification. And so there's a disincentive to go and market that loan. If I have a loan with Billy, and it's due in six months, I know if I get him to extend that three years, I can do it as non-current. But if I refinance with Tom, I have to do it as current. To me, that's the same, I don't understand why you get a different classification answer, depending on if you change your lender. So those are the kinds of things, and what we're trying to do is to make it simpler and more intuitive. At the same time, we don't want the situation that George talked about. We don't want a change in presentation to impact anyone's economic event. And so in these kind of situations, we pause to see if there's a way to extend out the transition. Or if there's not, then that's a, that's the thing that we evaluate in doing that. So that's kind of how this came about, and we're looking forward to finding out what you all think. And the board has not made any final conclusions to move forward on an exposure document at this point.
And I think also, I'll point out, that the outreach process that the FASB went through before they began to form their point of view, is one that we're also focusing on, is part of this process, which is, how much, how much broader should the outreach process be, given the private company stakeholder, stakeholder group? So we're gonna be talking about that at our meeting next week, because we think in all fairness to you, the stakeholders are private companies, as well as the stakeholders of public companies, that that initial outreach has got to be robust and broad. I mean, the, the feedback that this group, including the PCS members who were looking at this, feedback they got from the initial outreach with community bankers was not negative, right? It was not negative, not adverse to this.
As was.
And, and so that really provided some impetus, I think, to the FASB staff.
As, as well as vendors. What's interesting about when you talk to vendors, and they like this change, but their basis for why they like the change is, is they don't read the footnotes. Which is honestly a very difficult decision as a board member. You're, you're putting out standards that apply to the financial statements in the footnotes, and then you hear that the user wants it in the face of the financial statements, because they don't read the footnotes. And that's a very difficult decision, because you design the standards presuming the footnotes are integral, and that you design the standards presuming that the user reads all of what you've required to be presented to them.
So we're gonna ask you two questions, and I want to read them before I put them up on the screen, so you can really put them in the right context. The first one's gonna be, do you believe that debt with a material adverse change clause, or a subjective acceleration clause, should result in current debt classification? Yes, no, or uncertain? Think about today's practice.
Flip the slide.
Sorry?
You gotta flip the slide.
I'm not putting it up yet. I'm reading you the two questions first. Then the second question is gonna be, do you believe that debt covenant violations that are waived after the balance sheet date, but prior to the issuance of the financials, should continue to be classified as non-current? And I would include in that group of debt covenant violations, I would also include debt, debt rolled after the balance sheet date, because that's part of this process. So if you, if you will, do you believe that debt covenant violations that are waived, or any debt that's rolled outside the operating cycle, should be classified as non-current debt? So let's go to the first question. And again, do you believe that debt with a material adverse change clause, or a subjective acceleration clause, should result in current debt classification?
Vote early and often.
Wow.
Interesting.
That's amazing.
Billy?
Yes, sir.
I guess before proceeding, we, we had a participant ask a question on just, you know, subjective acceleration clauses and material adverse change clauses. I know in current GAAP, actually, you know, Darryl, or Russ, you summarized the fact that you'd have to assess the probability, right? And if it's remote, then it wouldn't affect your classification, meaning it could still be non-current. If it's other than remote, meaning north of remote, then it's probably gonna have current classification, under current GAAP to date. I guess under the proposal, I know that it's not finalized, do you have an indication of whether a material adverse clause or a subjective acceleration clause would trigger current or non-current classification? So that was a question that was raised by a participant, kind of in my ear.
I refer those questions to staff, Michael.
I can give you my take on it.
Go ahead.
Well, it's not too different than triggering an event for impairment. You know, it happens during the year. A subjective acceleration clause and the MAC clauses are intended to protect the bank and the investors in the bank from major events that can trigger the debt being labeled in default. I guess the answer to this is, the intensity of those triggering events, and how, how soft is, or how quick is that trigger, as opposed to the tolerance for the operating cycle? You'd have to look at the wording. I really believe that there needs to be some more standard nomenclature and standard approaches to MAC clauses and, and the like, within the industry, and if, if the standard setting can help amplify that, it would be very helpful. But these answers, you know, are very indicative of the variability that could be out there in practice. I mean, we want, if it's, if there's a triggering event, it's, you know, someone's got to call a timeout. And if the financials aren't issued for another year, then there's some real responsibility on the part of the company.
Well, and it also points to the fact that in the proposal, the contractual right to defer, and the contractual right to settle after 12 months, there's some subjectivity in that. And that may require some legal judgments and other principles-based assessments. It's not completely black and white.
The footnotes are intended to allow the reader to be sensitive to those variables and those factors, as opposed to, in this case, dictate the balance sheet classification when there is no problem.
And I guess my own experience too, with the revisions that have happened to bank loan documents, as largely as a result of Dodd-Frank, you've seen more of these documents with private companies become more one-sided, I guess is the best way to put it, in a politically correct manner. So I get concerned about whether or not, even if we move in the direction of the proposal, that it's gonna meet all of the intended objectives.
Okay.
I guess for this, I mean, to answer Russ's question, I think, in one of the board meetings that related to this discussion point, I, I think the initial thought was that a material adverse clause, or change clause, or subjective acceleration clause, could bring into question your right to defer settlement for greater than 12 months. But again, that was their initial thought, and I think that they, that, that could probably result in current classification. However, based on subsequent research, I think the staff is planning, I'm, I'm not the project lead, but I've, I've had discussions with the project lead on this, and they're gonna bring back, I think, additional facts to state that, look, there are subjective acceleration clauses and MAC clauses in pretty much every debt agreement. We actually have a running joke within the staff. I told her that, in my experience, 11 out of 10 private company debt agreements have these clauses. So if that was the case, every private company debt arrangement would be current. So then they did further research, and what, I guess we found out so far preliminarily is that, a lot of these MACs and SAC clauses are actually not legally enforceable. And in fact, when we talked to various lenders, they couldn't even recall an instance where they actually enforced a MAC or a SAC clause as a breach, you know, within the debt agreement, to make it current. So I guess in practice, it's in every single debt arrangement, but in reality, it's never been enforced.
Yeah.
Again, it goes back to the legal judgments that may be involved, though. And that may change. It goes back again, we talked about enforceability a lot with the new REVREIT standard, and you could see it in this as well.
Okay, let's go to the next question, and this is the important question. Again, do you believe that debt covenant violations that are waived after the balance sheet date, but prior to the issuance of the private company's financial statements, or prior to issuance of financials, should continue to be classified as non-current? And I would include in that, debt that's rolled after the balance sheet date, but before you issue the financial statements, because it's one and the same as far as the effect. All right? Very important question for us. Would all the noes please stand up? Okay. You two would enjoy the beer at the tavern in Norwalk. It's the only place we retain our sanity in there, right, Tom?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All in there? Go ahead, Mike.
This one's actually me.
Oh, hey, Jeff, I'm sorry.
I get the pleasure of teeing up leases, which has engendered just a little bit of discussion between the PCC and the board over the last few years. So as Darryl mentioned earlier, we're in the final stages before issuing a final leases standard, with the key topic for discussion still being the effective date. Let me go on to the next slide. And where the board has landed in its redeliberations is, stays true to the original objective of the project, which is to put these legal obligations onto the balance sheet as liabilities, and with a corresponding asset, which is the right to use the property or equipment during the life of the lease. But it does so in a way that is a little different than some of the original proposal. The original proposal would have had various measurement complexities that folks pointed out, and there've been a lot of simplifications in the measurement of this liability in terms of renewal options and variable lease payments. And what the board has really spent a lot of its time on, on the last year or two, couple years or so, along with the IASB, is what to do with the effect on the income statement. And after a couple of different proposals where the board has landed, let's go to the next slide, is essentially something that keeps much of what is in current GAAP, including the dividing line between operating leases and, and capital leases. Now, all would be on the balance sheet, except for some short-term leases, we'll get to that in a minute. But the other aspects of this would remain more or less what's in GAAP. So you'd have differences based on the nearness or farness away from the constructive purchase. That's the current dividing line. We'd probably get rid of some of the sharp edges on that, the 75% and 90% figures. But essentially, keep that, keep that current dividing line, and more or less, what you would be putting in your footnotes, is what you'd be now putting on your balance sheet, discounted to present value. And you would have no changes, and you'd need no new systems, no, no new, special new amortizations, or anything like that. Essentially, what you'd be doing is, when you initially put the leases on, and then during each, at each, the end of each reporting period, just updating your asset and updating your liability, doesn't affect your, your P and L. Your P and L would be straight-line rent expenses, it currently is. Let's move on to the next slide. I mentioned all except the short-term leases, there is even a simplification there as well. We had initially said that if a lease had any, was for 12 months or less, but had any sort of renewal option whatsoever, then that would, would knock things out. And in the final decision, the board went to, is consistent with its general decisions about simplifying renewal options, which is only if the renewal option is certain to be exercised, reasonably certain to be exercised, then it would be considered a longer-term lease. Otherwise, it would qualify for the short-term lease, which would keep the amount, or at least be an option for the company to keep the amount off of the balance sheet. I mentioned before, go on to the next slide, that we'd be discounting back to present value in response to what we heard from some private companies and from some, some not-for-profit organizations, that they may not be doing a bunch of borrowing, and may not have the idea, an idea of what the incremental borrowing rate is. Consistent with the last proposal, the board retained the practical expedient to use a risk-free rate, a treasury rate of comparable duration in that measurement. And then finally, the thing to note, which is on the next slide, is that the board also addressed an area that's been very challenging at times for, particularly for private companies over the years, where there are a lot of related-party leases, and where current GAAP would have you look through to try to figure out what's the underlying substance, and account for the underlying substance, and what we've heard for many quarters, that that's very difficult to do in practice. So what we're, what the final decision here, consistent with the, the last proposal, is to not try to divine what that underlying substance is, but simply account for the legally enforceable terms and conditions of the lease, and rely, and rely a bit on related-party disclosures, to give users the, the key information that they need with regard to the leases. And with that, before we get into the questions, I think I'll let Billy ask the questions on this.
And what I really wanted to do is, the FASB has put a lot of hours into this project over the years, as you know, and, and they did make some significant changes to this proposal, a little over a year ago, about a year, about a year and a half ago. And, and they're, and they're very good changes. We just believe there's one more to make, and that's why we wanted to bring this to you, and, and get your feedback, because they're getting close to burying the hatchet on this issue and getting it out. And I thought it would be fair to get your input on the more current version of this, of this standard. So the first question would be, do you believe that liabilities, or legal obligations, if you will, arise from operating leases? Operating leases, not capital. I love that uncertain. All right, group, now we can read it. Okay. Not too surprising, the answer there. I think we all, when you look at the definition of a liability. Now, next question, do you believe that assets, do you believe that assets arise from operating leases, vis-à-vis right to use? So is the right to use, is it an asset? Not OCI, not ARO. Is it an asset?
Wait till the polling question, where we ask you to do the T-account for what you want the debit to be. Forty-nine, forty-nine.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your mixed answer there, Lisa.
The donut is half-iced. George says OCI. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. And next question, as redeliberated, so this is the current version, do you believe the standard's expected benefits justify its perceived costs and complexities? There is a God.
Is he in this room?
There's a lot of risk when we bring these questions directly to you, because we're gonna get an answer that we might not have wanted. We're gonna get an answer that we, you know, hypothesized over for hours and hours. So this is, this is real, it's good.
You know, I, I think that the follow-up question here would be, really, what do you believe the cost and complexities are of what we've redeliberated? Because as Billy indicated, we've made some significant changes to our proposal in the, in the latest round of redeliberations, and literally, to put operating
And literally, to put operating leases on the balance sheet, we're not anticipating that there will be any system changes whatsoever. I mean, it literally is simply a matter of taking essentially what you're disclosing in a footnote today and putting it on the balance sheet. There's not even, of those right-of-use assets, there's not even any amortization that happens. You simply remeasure the liability, not remeasure, but you just reduce the liability for payments from period to period, and adjust the asset accordingly. So that stumps me just a little bit with regard to the belief that there's significant costs and complexities.
I'd like to clarify that a little bit, if I could.
He couldn't see you, you're under the light. Go, let him ask his question first, then we'll come back to you, George.
This will be real quick, and I think that's a great point, Daryl, it was a tough question to answer, because I don't think it's so much cost and complexity, I think it's relevance. So if somebody's used, if the user of our financial statement at our firm, we have 20 million in assets and 20 million in equity liabilities, we may be a $100 million company when you add the liability, with the liability for the lease and the asset. Is that really relevant? Does it make any sense? No, it's not going to be real complex or hard for us to add up, I just don't think the user gets anything out of that. So it's, it's a, that was a difficult question to answer. I said no, but it's more of a relevance question than it is cost and complexity.
So here's what we've found about what users do. They generally take the reported results and they adjust the balance sheet, but not by the footnote. They adjust the balance sheet by last year's rent expense, and some multiply it by six, some eight, some seven, some nine. And generally, by putting it on the balance sheet, what we've found is the actual calculation the user will use will decrease their analysis. So in theory, your cost of capital should be a lot better by putting it on the balance sheet. In other words, they ignore the footnote, they take your rent expense, multiply it by a hypothetical number that's all in their various internal processes that has generally nothing to do with what is the company's pure legal obligation. So what we think is, is by putting a better measure on the balance sheet, investors will make a better informed decision about what your true obligation is. That's what the board uses the perceived benefit. The cost is virtually nil from an accounting result. There is a cost, and a potential cost from an economic standpoint, because it can impact covenants. And that's something we have to consider, is what would happen? And what we're looking at is, with respect to the effective date, putting it out long enough so that the general renegotiation of your covenants would be done pursuant to contractual terms, not done specifically because of something Norwalk did. But that's, that's the perceived benefit that the board has found.
So my clarification on this is a little more practical when it comes to the cost part. We have a number of operating leases, you know, and we have a number of capital leases. And if I thought I had to roll forward our operating leases, I think I'd have a problem. The controls we have around operating leases, it's essentially a spreadsheet. There's no, we don't keep them on the fixed asset register, and literally, we have hundreds of them. And people rent copiers out in our plants, and we have forklifts, and a lot of the major ones we track. But I think there are probably some that might be missing. I hope they're immaterial. But if they're on the balance sheet, I think I've got a much higher standard that I've got to deal with. So I've got a process change if it's going to be on the balance sheet, and I can't just all of a sudden find a new operating lease without having a different issue that I've, I think that's the practical process problem that we're going to see by adding, adding things to the balance sheet. And it's not going to be insignificant to adopt it. It's, it's going to take some time to really change our processes to make this happen. And actually, systems are terrible, I don't care how sophisticated they are, at present value of anything. So capital leases, for instance, keeping your debt on the books and thinking that when your accounts payable person makes the debt payment, it's going to record interest properly on each individual payment. That's just not the case. And to expand this to operating leases, I think is another, it's just an operational issue that I think will be resolved over time as soon as QuickBooks fixes it.
I think it's important, I think it's important to reiterate what Daryl said. There won't be interest expense on any operating leases. None, zero. No new interest expense, it sounds like George W. Bush, on operating leases. It's just whatever was a capital lease is going to be a finance lease under the new standard, and there will be interest and depreciation and amortization on those. On operating leases, there will be an asset and a liability, and it'll still roll through the income statement as a single-line rent expense. You know, so I think we have identified, we've identified the problem, which was the first question that was asked, which is, do operating leases create liabilities? And the answer is yes. And we have now, in the most cost-effective way that we can, put together a standard that would record those operating leases. And, and that's, that's what we've done. The feedback that we've gotten from capital providers is that they do try to consider the obligations that arise from leases when they do their analyses, whether they're equity investors, whether they are debt providers, they do try to assess them, and they do it in a very non-rigorous way, as Russ described. And, and I think this gives them at least something to shoot at when they are looking at the balance sheet.
I guess my own experience with those users is, when those adjustments are made, they're when they're operating leases that are more akin to purchase-finance type of arrangements, and less akin to what Bill talked about with an office lease that could be argued as an executory contract. So I guess from my own perspective, when the board went down the path of a consumption approach a while back to try to discern, I thought that was more theoretically pure than where they're, they're landing today. Having said that, you know, what George talked about with new things manifesting themselves when they move from the footnotes to the face of the financial statements, I mean, that trend's been around for a long time. Whether it's this board or any other board, there's been very little sympathy or empathy for, for that. So we've encouraged people to put stuff in the footnotes now, so it doesn't surprise the users later. But recognizing, I understand, the practical parts of that.
Okay, let's move on to the next question.
Wait, Billy, sorry.
Sorry?
We have a participant that would like to provide a comment or a question, so.
Go ahead.
Figured it's town hall, we'd get their feedback.
That's right, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. My name's Michael Haas, I'm a three-person firm out in Burbank, California. And to be a contrarian, we've been frustrated by the proposal probably for the last three years. And first, we heard it was because of international standard convergence, then we heard because the lenders wanted it. Well, our concern is not so much the disclosure, we're going to look at the other side of it, if it's in the disclosure, what's wrong with that, to start, to leave it there. But, and it's not so much the covenant standpoint, because we figure out the lenders can screw it up one way or another, whether it's a covenant being blown or not. But we have a regulatory concern with our clients, and we can take three zeros off of our clients' balance sheets, because we don't deal with the millions, we deal with the hundreds of thousands. But we have clients where they're, they are audited, but they're under regulatory scheme in California, that they have a liquidity requirement to meet. And all of a sudden, now, there's these liabilities that are going to hit current liabilities, particularly, it's not so much the lease of the, of the copying machine is, but it's the operating lease of the, of the building that's now going to blow, blow that regulatory requirement, that's what we have the concern over. And now, their cash isn't changing, their right-of-use asset isn't becoming a liquid asset, but now they have a current liability that's going to take them into trouble with the regulator. And that's where our concern has always been, as to why, what's wrong with just leaving it as a disclosure. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, you, you do have a liability, but with an asterisk. An asterisk is that, I'm only using the asset, I can give it back. I may pay a penalty, but I can give it back. And so that's, that's another part of the argument that we've been dealing with. Are there any others before we move into this question?
Billy, I think we should probably clarify just a little bit. Whereas the leases project was a joint project, as you know, in the end, we are not converged with the IASB on, on where we have, have respectively entered, ended up. And so I don't think that we could say that sort of, we got led down this path by the IASB. I think rather, what we're eventually ending up with here is, we're correcting something that has been a flaw in GAAP for a long time. And that is, things that meet the definitions of assets and liabilities are now going to be put on the balance sheet. And recognizing the fact that, you know, many would believe that good information is being provided currently by that being in the footnote, our belief is that better financial reporting results when things that meet those definitions actually get shown on the face of the statements, as opposed to just simply being disclosed. And the reason we are not converged at the end of the day with the IASB is, we've heard the feedback that what we had been proposing, whether it was the consumption method, or one type of lease, or two types of leases, and what the dividing line was, we heard that the feedback was that it was too complex and too costly to do. So we have rolled back the proposal significantly to try to make it as cost-effective as possible, so that we're really just taking the footnote and capitalizing it. Not this, you know, I'm not suggesting that it's cost less, I'm just saying that it's the most cost-effective way that we could figure out to transition to this new approach. And that's why we're not converged.
Okay, so let's answer this question. Do you believe that the private companies should be exempt from recording assets and liabilities arising from a type B lease or an operating lease? You know, obviously, if this were to become a standard, it'd have to be a seam or a reason, there has to be an issue of relevance. But just from your own perspective, do you believe there should be an exemption from this for private companies? Where are all the yeses? Good feedback, thank you very much. Okay, do you believe your clients will seek a qualified audit or review opinion to the redeliberated leasing standard? I want to indicate audit, or there's audit, accounting. So reviews follow accounting, all this. So do you believe your clients will seek a qualified opinion to this standard, if you don't follow it? Again, there's a question of significance here, I guess. Thank you very much for that feedback, it's helpful for us on this topic, as well as the FASB. So who's teeing up the next topic there? Is it you, Jeff, or is it Mike?
I guess there's one comment from the online participants that I'll read out loud, and perhaps you guys could respond to it, or maybe just consider it at least. And it's, would you consider adding a clause that would allow only prospective leases to be classified on the balance sheet and let preparers leave the existing leases as-is? This would definitely change my answer related to cost and complexity. Once enacted, go-forward leases would be easy to account for on the balance sheet. So I think this is a transition question of just applying it on future leases rather than all your leases as of the adoption date.
Did you get that question? Did you hear all of it?
Yeah.
Repeat it.
Would you allow prospective transition for new leases? I mean, I think that was one of the things the board considered. I did not vote for that, because I, when you look at, some leases are long, and you'd have to answer certain questions about, well, what if you renewed an existing lease, is it prospective or it's not? And generally, I felt that it was better to have a, and we haven't voted on the effective yet, but I think it's better to have an extended transition period to the new standard than do a situation where you have different accounting for your future transactions versus old transactions. That said, for leveraged leases, from a lessor perspective, I did vote to grandfather those. But again, that, that is, and those are very long leases, but that was because I felt that transactions were entered into under one rule mechanism, and that rule mechanism is highly dependent upon the accounting and highly dependent upon the tax strategy, and so I was okay grandfathering those. But the rest, I personally voted for a, not a prospective.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's hard to overstate just how difficult it would be to do these prospectively and try to still figure out. Then the, then the dividing line and the tension point would be around renewals and what's a new lease, and what's, what's just a lease modification of an old lease. I think that would cause a lot of consternation just around the same kind of thing. So I think it would just be shifting sort of the cost burden of the transition. And certainly, there would be non-comparability amongst the people who are reading the financial statements, those who have long leases today would be in one position of off-balance-sheet treatment, and those that have shorter leases or leases that are coming up would be in a different position that would make it harder for users to understand and compare what's going on.
Okay, let's, let's move on to new topics. We've got about 15 minutes or so here left, and I want to make sure we make good use of it. Are there other areas of GAAP that the PCC should focus on to improve financial reporting of private companies? I'd like to have a comment from you. And while you're thinking about those, would you like to tee up this VIE question that we're going to be talking about at our next meeting?
Sure, I can do that, or Mike, if you want to do that, it's fine.
Sure, I can jump right into the question, I guess, if you go to the next polling question.
Okay, do private companies, with regards to VIAs, do private companies still find issues in applying the VIE guidance to entities under common control?
So I think, you know, just to clarify, obviously, there is ASU 2014-07, which would apply to leasing arrangements under common control. This would be arrangements that are not addressed by that particular issue. So let's say, you know, a typical one could be, you have one private company that manufactures something, let's say a car, and then you have another brother or sister entity that manufactures maybe tires or engines. Should you assess VIE guidance for those type of arrangements? Or is there difficulty in applying VIE guidance to those type of arrangements?
Okay, tee up, okay, Tom?
Yeah, I think the other thing that happened since we talked about this issue last year was the issuance of ASU 1502, which made some consequential changes to the related-party guidance. And also, did some things that addressed some of the concerns that were raised by this audience last year on the general partners presumption of consolidation by modifying that or eliminating that, and coming up with new, new guidance in the limited partnership area. So we have that, we have 1407. I think the question is, as Mike raised, is are there other brother-sister types of entities that are under common control, that don't qualify for 1407, were not affected by 1502, that would be worthy of PCC attention, or board attention?
Answer to the question.
I guess before this closes up, you know, I'm doing a deeper dive on PCC topics, and a big chunk of the discussion will revolve around VIE guidance and these type of scenarios. So if you're definitely interested, you know, please participate and you can provide more detailed feedback on this particular issue.
Yeah, we'd love to get some examples, we have some, as Mike talked about, we'd like to get a little more examples to find what the best way to attack this, this issue is. Certainly something that'll be discussed in our meeting next week in Norwalk.
Okay, this issue or others that you might want to bring to our attention? We're not going to answer this polling question just now, it's going to sit there. Are there other issues you'd like to bring to our attention? Are those online, or are those here in the room? To the mic?
Yeah, don't be shy. Actually, I'll walk to you if you have to, if you don't feel like walking up here.
That's great marketing.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it easy.
There's somebody over there.
Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to go back to the preferability subject, and the reason I think there was all kinds of answers was, if you have a company, you pick up a new client, and their prior accountant had no idea about these PCC alternatives, and now you get them five years later, well, you should be able to let them now adopt these new standards. So that's why I think that the preferability for the private companies should be at any point.
The smarter CPA exception.
It's a change in circumstances. I found a smarter CPA.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Is the constraint, see, I would have, if I were in your shoes, I would go to the client and I'd say, oh, you could do this, and I would have concluded it's preferable. and I'd say, oh, you could do this, and I would have concluded it's preferable. So to me, the constraint is not concluding it's preferable, the constraint is having to do retrospective accounting. Do you think the constraint is having to judge whether or not the PCC alternative is preferable to the public company alternative for a private company? Or do you think the constraint is having to do retrospective accounting for that item?
I think, it depends on the situation, but it could be both, depending on which alternative you're looking at. And also, you have to document the reason for the preferability, versus if you could just adopt it, that's one less step and less cost that would be involved.
Okay.
Okay, did we get that question answered? Any other questions?
There's one up here.
This is a question that came in from an online.
Sorry? One coming in a line, well, Jeff, you come up here to, put your hand up again, right there. Go ahead, probably an online question.
Question that came in from online, and it's probably on the mind of many, many people here in the room today. What has the board found in its research regarding the bank's willingness to renegotiate covenants when we add leasing liabilities to the balance sheet?
We've done a lot of work with financial institutions, and we engaged an academic to look at what happened when we had other projects that required significant changes to the balance sheet. So for example, pensions and OPEB. The same arguments were expressed when we required pensions and when we required OPEB, that there'd be a substantial impact on covenants, substantial higher cost of capital. In essence, what banks say is, if the company's good, we'll renegotiate the covenant. If the company's not good, we're not going to renegotiate the covenant. And that's why we think it's important that when we look at the effective date, it's far enough out there such that the renegotiation would happen in due course anyway. And if the company was not doing well, you would think a renegotiation in due course would change the economics anyway. So the goal is, is to not have the accounting standard impact the negotiation with the bank, but have the real economics of the company impact the negotiation of the bank.
Yeah, a while back, while this was being initially vetted, one of the credit analysts did a report on this, and basically trying to answer this basic question, and their answer was, basically, it wouldn't change much unless there were some surprises. And one of the surprises that George alluded to earlier is when new things manifest themselves, when they move from the footnotes to the face of the financial statements. And the other circumstance that they talked about as being a difference, maybe not necessarily a surprise, when the rent times seven or eight percent, or whatever discount rate they were applying to the payments on these leases is different than what would be applied when the leases are added to the balance sheet. And that may give them some pause based on the analysis they had done in the past.
Okay, other questions? Yes, sir, you have one?
This is more of a request. I'm a practitioner, we handle mostly private companies. And while I believe in the concept of share-based payments being an appropriate determination of compensation, in a private company, generally speaking, the options and warrants that are issued to employees have very little to do with the market, there's very little market impact on them, and it seems so ludicrous and ineffectual for us to have to, or the client, to have to calculate the value of that compensation based on volatility, based on exercise date, and based on other market factors that have nothing to do with this particular company. And I guess what we're asking for is, isn't there a better way to do this without all of this complexity?
Well, we looked at that, and one of the alternatives that was deemed not viable based on outreach by the staff was to essentially eliminate a lot of the measurement uncertainty by recording it based on its intrinsic value at each reporting date. So whatever is in the money would be shown up as a liability based on the value of the instrument at each reporting date. And that could even be further simplified by using a proxy for fair value. There was some appetite for that, when in some cases, with private companies, agreements are structured such that the value of the business is five times EBITDA, or some percentage of revenues, et cetera, and you could use that. So you would have a simplification there as well. The downside is that you'd have to record something at every reporting period, and for that reason, that was deemed to be not viable with user outreach. So there's some tension there, understanding and completely appreciating the issues with the measurement uncertainty at the grant date, but when we eliminate that, there's a lack of desire to report the amount that it's in the money. And to me, that was more relevant information for a private company, because it gives you a claim on cash, information about the claim on cash that's now obfuscated with grant-date accounting. But the outreach was pretty much one-sided the other way, we don't want to do that.
Any other comments?
I mean, if there is appetite to do that, please talk to Mike in the concurrent session today and later on.
Or if you have any other suggestions as to simplification and relevance at the same time, we'd love to hear that.
So he gave you a good answer, did you buy it? Okay, he didn't buy it.
We also thought about going back to the old way, the APB 25 intrinsic value, but in that case, you had high costs for a private company, because every time you issued an option, you had to value the underlying stock. So you have to value the underlying stock today, so that, so the incremental cost to the fair value is running it through a black shoals and figuring out what your expected life is and figuring out your volatility. Your point about, why do you look at market volatility that may or may not be related to the company you're looking at? You don't have to, it's just that was an easier proxy for private companies. You could do a pure volatility if you choose, we just were trying to make it easier. The problem is, the intrinsic value has a lot of cost, a lot of footfalls. The exercise date, which is what Tom talks about, to me, is the best economic answer, but people hated it, because they didn't want to have to mark-to-market, in essence. And so what we ended up with, was is what we have is not really well-liked, but it's liked more than the other things. Because it doesn't seem like you could say, well, I'm actually giving value to employees and I ignore it. No one seems to want to do that, so it was the, we can't, yeah, there you go. We do a lot of that, the board.
I do like worst options.
Daryl?
I was just going to say, I do like the point of your question, though, because it shows that we have evolved as a profession. I mean, we're talking about measurement alternatives now versus whether this should be recognized at all, and that's where we were 30 years ago. So I think that's great.
I have another question back here.
This is from an online commentator, saying that while the response overwhelmingly in the room here was for the adoption of the goodwill alternative, this enquirer here is saying that he's found some reluctance on the part of clients to want to adopt, especially those that have large amounts of goodwill, they're reluctant to take the hit on the P and L. Any comments from the panel?
Well, that's their, I'll give my first quick answer, and I'm supposed to facilitate, but not a pine, but I'll do anyway. It's an alternative, and that's why it's an alternative. If it applies, if you are acquisition-centric, you probably don't want to adopt this alternative. If you plan on going public soon, and you don't want to incur that cost of resetting your financial statements as a cost of going public, don't do that. But the alternative is there, is an expeditious, practical expedient, if you will, to those who don't dwell in acquisition accounting. Any other answers here?
Yeah, one of the things when we were discussing this is, we said, from a private company perspective, they're more focused on cash. This amortization or impairment is irrelevant. Users don't care, it's not cash-related, and private company users were more concerned about cash. So that's obviously not universal. If somebody's concerned about net income, then it's obviously more relevant to them. Maybe they're looking at going public or something like that. So it's not universal, but, you know, we felt that more private companies would take it than not.
Any other quick comments before we go to the next question? Another question? Does he have another hand out there? Okay, one in the back row.
Has the PCC started to make any considerations regarding debt modifications and extinguishments as a possible private company exemption? Just when you look at all this, fair value of debt has very minimal impact to a privately-held company. Banks just want, they just want to say, what do we owe? If you do a refinance, especially in the debt market over the past few years, companies have been refinancing some every year for multiple years in a row. I just have a lot of clients who find that standard not very applicable.
Any answers to that?
Could I clarify, actually? Is your question related to the FAS 107 disclosure, or purely just when there's a debt modification or a change? Is that? So it's related to, there's a change in the debt agreement, assessing whether it's troubled debt restructuring? If it's not, is it an extinguishment or a modification?
TDR, I'll defer to my board member, Mark Seeger. No, there is that 10% rule in all the questions about, is it an extinguishment, is it a modification?
Yeah, there's been some longstanding difficulties in trying to figure out what's a modification versus what's a new loan, we recognize that. We did do some work on troubled debt restructurings in the impairment project that we're working on, and we think we've made some changes to that that would eliminate some of the issues that people have had with it, that once a TDR, always a TDR. But I think that that's, you've identified a troublesome area of gap that's going to be very difficult and very judgmental, no matter what we do, whether it's a modification of an existing loan or whether it's a new loan, and I don't know that we've found a silver bullet for that yet.
If you could write that question down and give it to Mike, we'll at least discuss it, okay? Anything else before, I want to go ahead and get this polling question answered, we're out of time. You see the question, "Does it appear to be operating properly to date? Yes, no, or uncertain?" As you know, there's a refresh or a relook at the PCC currently by the FAS trustees, and they'll be taking all the input that people have provided and processing that into any recommendations later this year. Okay, that's pretty well stopped moving. Final question, "How do you currently stay up to date on private company council activities? Please select your primary method, if you would. A is PCC website, including meeting minutes or issue summaries and the like. B is news from PCC media, meeting recap, press releases, action alerts, and that sort of thing. C is attend PCC meetings in person to view the meeting webcast, or view the meeting webcast. D is external media, online or print publications that you read. Then E is other, and I don't follow the PCC activities," which is a legitimate answer for many I know. So take a look at those, and appreciate any input that you have there. Are you going to increase the advertising rates for several third parties, magazine? Okay, thank you very much. All right, is there anything else, Mike or Jeff, that you would have us cover before we're done, or?
I don't have any.
Once again, the code is state.
The code is state, S-T-A-T-E. Yes, sir, Daryl, Russ has a comment.
So what I learned from this presentation is, the board should think long and hard about changing debt classification for debt covenants. Not, that, we're kind of mixed on the acceleration clauses. On leases, you think it's theoretically a liability, but there's still questions about whether or not you think it's relevant. But in the end, it seems like you're going to, practice is going to move with what the board decides, but we ought to think more and focus more on explaining better or understanding why we think it's relevant. But the best news is that the PCC alternatives are working, they are supported, and that it's been good for the profession. That seems to be the key themes, so I think those are all good themes.
I want to thank you very much for your participation today. Hopefully, it's been a helpful format. Please provide your feedback to Ron Roush and the committee, and thank you very much.